Big Bush at the high school needed the new printer. She's already worn that one out. That's down on 401. And then Mr. Gilmore's been sitting too much. He's on 402. He's worn out his office chair too, although he blames it on Mr. Kettles who had it before him.
So it was a hammy damn.
Yes, yes. So that's our, and then on the building funding conferences, you can see the electric that we talked about last month. Matt Goff's come in and popping out the plumbing and then a few various things that we picked up at Lowe's for the finish. To continue to work on the softball dressing room, which we should get knocked out pretty quick.
Motion made by David, seconded by Kenny to improve the encumbrances as listed. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
This time we move on to other financial reports, pages four through nineteen.
Okay, started the month with $2,651,984.54. The receipts for the month, $919,387.10. It brought us to a total cash available of $3,571,371.64. We've obligated $817,446 of that and along with the $58,399.83 outstanding warrants. It leaves us with a cash balance at the end of the month at $2,695,525.81. You can see our building fund, we picked up another $22,526.55. We dispersed $18,000 of that toward the locker room, still leaving us with $720,296.66 with two more months of, with May and April. We're expecting, you know, continued revenue from Advorum to replenish what we're spending out of that. So we're doing good there. And again, child nutrition seems to be holding strong as well. So financially, we're good there. If you want to do a comparison, the FY '18 to FY ' '19, you can see the monthly payroll. It's, it's going to be up all year because of the race. But when you look at the monthly cash balance this year to last year, you can see that we kind of stayed behind last year for several months, but now with the, the Advorum monies coming in and everything, we're actually up... I don't got it here. $164,243.17 from this time last year. So we're really moving in a positive direction as far as the finances for, for this year. It's been, been a good year for us so far. And the, one of the things that's helped us a little bit has been our reading grant. Things we're doing there is we've had to spend less in tutoring. And the growth that we're showing with our kids that are in that program has been tremendous. So as a matter of fact, there was a really neat post on Facebook this week. A parent posted about their student who had gained almost two years of growth in reading this year. It was just a real neat deal and we're, we're glad that we have that. Any questions? The only other thing, you probably saw on your packet, we had a lot more than normal gas charges this month. That's, we'd had a lot of people on the road as well as not always using hopkins to fill up the buses. We have been doing some of that because of more time. Try to save some time. So, yeah. So, any questions?
Okay, this time the board moves to public comment. The Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items, no requests for that. B, editor comments in accordance with policy BE-B-R, no requests for that. Information items, superintendent reviews.
And this is just, and I haven't said very much about the Gear Up Grant because we've been working with the University of Oklahoma all year on their K-20 Center. Let her get that out first. But here's, we've kind of transitioned since I've been here to Chromebooks because they're a little less expensive than your normal laptop. And so that's just kind of some additions we've made to our inventory district-wide. And then with the Gear Up Grant, we've just got notification this week, so there's not a purchase order or anything, but we're going to be able to purchase 90 more Chromebooks for sixth and seventh grade. And they'll stay with sixth and seventh grade throughout their high school experience. And there will be additional monies coming as well. But we've been able to increase right at 350 individual devices. And if you can look through implementing the federal funds, and the only thing that's even come close to coming out of our, what would be considered state or local money general fund is in 2017 when we didn't order textbooks because we were waiting on an adoption. We went ahead and ordered 87 Chromebooks out of textbooks. But we've been able to use federal funds and other sources to really upgrade what we're doing with technology. That's not even, this doesn't even show what the upgrades that we made in Ms. Hurst Room through Carl Perkins Grants in our computer lab. This is just for everyday use of our, with our students. And it really covers elementary through, through a high school. We've been able to spread that out and try to get, try to get some money in some devices in all of the buildings. I don't know how much you've heard about the school report cards. Kind of have a, just thought I'd kind of give you a little brief overview of how we, how we did as a district. First is elementary. Academic achievement, that's based on how you did on the test. That one's real simple. You can see that we're above the state average. This covers third and fourth grade. Now, when we go to academic growth, on the right side, how you separate your schools can really play a huge role in this. The way our school is broken down into pre-K through fourth grade, that academic growth grade is only fourth grade. So you can look at that and say, well, we didn't get as much growth in fourth grade as we wanted, which that's going to be the case every year probably. But really, you have to go back and see how that grade did in third grade. Because if the third grade does really well in third grade, it puts a lot of pressure on those fourth grade teachers to show additional growth when you have a, a really good third grade group. And also, when you take the academic achievement, which is divided between third and fourth grade and the academic growth and the chronic absenteeism, 67% of your score comes from the fourth grade. So it's not the truest measure of what you're seeing grade, completely through the grade school. But again, it is a much more fair assessment, in my opinion, than the last school report cards that we had. Chronic absenteeism, that's for any students that miss more than 10%, which can get there pretty quick. But we, we're doing, we did a pretty good job on the absenteeism. And then our overall score is a C. Can you go down just a little bit? And again, it's the growth element that just put us a little below the state because we were above the state in performance and chronic absenteeism. So that's the elementary school. Then we go to the middle school. You can see our academic achievement is very good at the middle school. We had a good year there. Also had a good academic growth year. It seems like there's always something that jumps up and gets you. Chronic absent, believe it or not, it's a little harder to get middle school kids to come to school on a regular basis than it is elementary school kids. So, I mean, that's definitely an area that we're going to continue to work on and monitor. And it may be an area, when we get through looking at all the, the data, you know, we may ask for a little more investment into an in-school suspension program so that we don't have to do as much suspension to help with this chronic absenteeism. Here again, the state average is at 55. If you remember, the elementary school was at 53. Here, we're at 57 at the middle school. So we're staying at, we're a little above the state average. And if we can work on that chronic absenteeism, we'll, we, we didn't miss a B by too much right here at the middle school level.
Is this based on one, one grade also say 53?
No, this is fifth through eighth. They all participate in the test. Now, the third grade, the kind of anomaly or whatever, the third grade's your baseline year, so there is no growth to that. That, that's why it starts there. So the first year that you can actually judge growth is from third to fourth. And if we broke our elementary at, you know, pre-K to fifth grade, which a lot of schools do, then we'd have two years. It's just a matter of the way we, we break it down. And, and hey, there'll be years when we have really, really, really strong third and fourth grade classes and it'll just, and then you'll say, man, it wasn't for that one grade in middle school or something. So, you know, it's a, you just have to look at it on the whole, whole school spectrum. Okay, high school, academic achievement. You can see that we do good at graduation. We're doing good, pretty good in chronic absenteeism. It's amazing when you get to offer more electives and kids actually get to select the courses that appeal to them, they don't miss school as much. When you can offer things like VOTAC and stuff like that, it helps. Now, on, and as we've noticed the last, last year, as we've talked about it, our ACT score was not as good as what we expect as a district. That's why we've implemented multiple things this year to improve that. And if you go down one more slide here, you'll see between the concurrent enrollment and the students that we have enrolled in Career Tech, and we're also looking at possibly doing some internships next year, our post-secondary opportunities are pretty good. So we're, we're not perfect at any, at any of these. Here, we, our overall grade is 56. State average is 55. The positive that I see out of this is we don't have one, one school that's showing weakness or anything. We're all between 53 and 57%. Obviously, the negative is we're not all Bs and As. So we're going to continue to work to, to make improvements there. As far as Stigler as a district, I think two things that creates the largest challenges is we're a little over 23% special ed and we're 65% free-introduced lunches. Our county depend on which demographic you want to pull from. We're right at 20%. Of our county does not have a high school diploma. And in most studies, less than 12% have a college degree. So please keep this in mind. Students that are at home with parents that speak a college vocabulary and hopefully watch the news and things like that, they are naturally going to be exposed to things that come up on tests that are prepared by college graduate people.
That's not going to happen here, don't sound like it.
It's, it's a challenge. We, we just have to work. We have to work to expose. And it's a challenge for a teacher to try to use vocabulary in your class that your students understand. And also use vocabulary in your class that's going to show up on one of these tests. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of nicknames and bywords and everything else that you can say to get your point across. And they may understand what you're saying and talking about. But when they read it phrased in a different context, sometimes it's a challenge. So I'm, like I said, I'm not saying it can't be done. And I'm not going to say, I think there's some value in the way that we're doing the school report cards now. I really do believe that. But also don't think that you can jump, it's easy to jump overboard on one direction or the other on these as well. Okay? You, you keep the whole picture in perspective. Keep, when a whole school district is moving in a positive direction, you know, I think that, those are the things you take from that and, and move forward with it. So, any questions? Any other questions?
Okay, this time we move on to action topic A, consideration of contract with auditor for the 1920 school year and to audit the financial activities of the 1819 school year.
In working with everyone in this office and everything, even though, I thought Kerry Patton worked us over pretty good, but our ladies in the office would really like to stay with that auditing firm, you know. And obviously, he, they didn't just come in and say, everything's good. They really went deep and found, found some areas that we can improve in, and we're doing that. And, but it was with the attitude that we're all working together to make it better. So it was a good thing. So I would recommend Kerry Patton.
Oh, we've been with him, yeah.
This our sector?
This is our second year. Typically, we kind of change around like five years of sector, about five years.
That's a pretty good, yeah.
Possibly, okay.
Make a motion, we contract with Kerry Patton for the 1920 school year.
Motion made by John, seconded by David to contract with Kerry Patton for the auditor for the 1920 school year. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of renewing our contract with MaaS for student personnel software for attendance and grades for the 1920 school year, pages 20 through 23.
Okay, we've used MaaS for as long as I can remember. They are one of the few companies that do things like this. That are Oklahoma-based company. We can run to Shawnee and get training from them if we want. The student information package, the gradebook package, the lunchroom package, all of those things are included in the services. And the prices have not gone up from last year. The whole package is $14,099.56.
Make a motion, we contract with MaaS for the 1920 school year.
Motion made by John, seconded by Jennifer to renew our contract with MaaS for student personnel software for attendance and grades for the 1920 school year. John?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of revision of CBFA-R Fair Labor Act Standard Act Regulations, pages 26, I'm sorry, 24 through 25.
Okay, this last month, we went with the auditor's recommendation on these particular policies. And then after we put it all together, there was actually, we actually felt there was a slight conflict with what we already had in policy. So we've been in contact with the CPA to make sure we're all on the same page. And they have approved the exempt and non-exempt classifications of employees. And it will simplify some of our timekeeping next year to make things a little less confusing than we thought they were going to have to be.
That was some of the auditor stuff, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I make a motion, we approve the CBFA-R Fair Labor Standard Act Regulation.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to make a revision of CBFA-R Fair Labor Standards Act Regulation. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, consideration of approval of Stigler High School academic team attending the National Academic Association Tournament in New Orleans, Louisiana on May 24th through the 28th, 2019. Students to be transported by school vehicle or rented vehicle. Additional fundraisers also requested for approval to help pay for expenses, pages 26 through 30.
And Ms. Grag's here, and they've had an excellent year. And I was just going to let her talk to you all a little bit about what they've done and the accomplishments and achievements that they've had this year. So it's all yours.
The reason we were invited to go to the national tournament was because our students won districts, regionals, and area. And so that gave us an invite to go. And they have also competed at our invitational and came out the consolation champs. They were second place in our conference this year. And then we went to an early conference, or an early tournament this year in Dixon, and we got fourth there. And so they have just done up and beyond what anyone could expect. And I brought my senior captain, Canyon Dean, because he needed to be a part of all of this too. And so I really would like to see them have a chance to see how they stand against other teams from all over the U.S. if we're not.
And how many times have you all been to nationals that you've kind of been working with the program?
We have gone to, this would be our fourth year. We have qualified in the last eight years, seven years worth. Ms., Patrick and I sat down and added up how many we have done and, between the two of us. And so we just haven't had the funds to go every year and everything, so.
Are these some of your awards over here?
Yes, ma'am. Those are the ones from this year.
This year?
Yes.
Wonderful.
And if you looked in your packet, especially with the tragedy that we've seen this week, you'll see that their travel times are during the daytime, daytime hours. And, and they've done a good job planning and, and preparing for that to try to keep the best interest of everyone involved there. So. Any question? Any other questions?
They taking bus or?
What, what we're looking at, and it's in the proposals, doing a van, renting a van from one of the local places in suburban where they'll have.
Like chain, yeah, okay. Now, that's. I make a motion, we approve the high school academic team attending nationals in New Orleans, Louisiana.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the Stigler High School academic team to attend the National Academic Association Tournament in New Orleans, Louisiana on May 24th through the 28th, 2019. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of lighting separation, middle school and high school, switching to LED.
Okay, we've worked on this for two months. And last, last month, it was kind of down to First Light and Excel Energy. And there was a significant price difference. And so I've, I reached out to both companies. And although First Light wouldn't step out as far as changing the fixtures and stuff, we did work, come to an agreement on all of the lenses, or not all of the lenses. Any lens that needs to be replaced so that when you walk in to the building, it'll all a fresh lens and it'll have the LED and everything. So they end up, we end up splitting the difference. They first said that they could replace all of them for no price difference. And I said, we need to get a count. And the count that needed to be replaced was far more than they had, they were thinking. So anyway, the original bid was $91,536. And so the current bid with replacing up to 250 lenses. And we've priced these, they're about $16 apiece is what we can get them for. So that, the price difference is $1,600. They'll, they'll do the entire job and replace up to 250 lenses for $93,136.
And the other bid was?
$160.
Are you more comf, you feel more comfortable with these bids now or not or?
I think they'll be fine. A blind bid to replace any fixtures that need re-replacing, there's a lot of gamble there. I understand that.
Well, if they can decide and look, I mean.
But, but you gotta, you gotta crawl up there and.
Have they already been here?
Yes, all three have been here. All three have done a complete inventory of all of our lights. And, and they've done all the walkthroughs. The, you know, Excel was the only company that with their standard package, they put in the motion sensors. They're the only company that their standard package replaces any fixture that's got any damage, wear, tear. So, you know, with the other companies, we've kind of had to revise the way they do bids because it's typically retrofit and put back the way you found it and leave. So, but either one of the two companies, I haven't, they're both solid companies. They just, they just do business two different ways, just to be honest.
So the $160,000, they, they replace anything that needs to replace.
Anything that needs to replace.
If nothing needs to replace, then they don't.
They do really well, but.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm guessing if we do come up against stuff that's not usable, then we will replace it.
It'll, yeah, it'll be, it'll be out of pocket, yes, yes.
I don't remember the warranty, but comparable?
First Light's seven, Excel's ten. Year.
Sixty-seven thousand dollars, we can.
We're going to stand.
We can stand and replace.
We can replace a lot, yeah. Still, can't remember the payoff, but two, four years.
Four years. And, you know, first I have to get this approved to put the lease purchase package together. But with what I'm planning on moving forward with is a three-year payout in that way. The, of the three companies, the estimated energy savings is between $22,000 and $36,000 a year. So regardless of, I mean, we have a really good board here. There's not any major financial catastrophe going to hit in the next three years, and it'll be paid for. And there's going to be $20,000 to $30,000 additional money left to use for other purposes after that point. So that would definitely, that's going to be what I recommend doing moving forward on the three-year.
Ninety-three cents there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's First Light.
First Light.
Make a motion, we accept the bid and give Superintendent authority to pursue whatever he's got to do to get to done.
I, I have the lease firsters package together next month.
You can address that up a lot better than I said it.
I don't know.
I'll second that.
Okay, until I stay here. Motion made by John, seconded by Kenny to give Superintendent Monica three the authority to enter into a lease purchase with First Light for $93,136,000.
Let's just enter into agreement with First Light to replace.
First Light, to replace the LEDs?
Yes.
Okay. And leave it at that?
Yes.
Okay. John?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic F, consideration of DEQ grant.
Okay, this is probably, this, y'all think this strange for him to be doing like this. But we've already gotten a grant for $25,000 toward a new bus. Both of these grants came out at the same time, so we filled out both of them. Okay? Now we've gotten the DEQ grant that's for 25% of a bus, not $25,000. Based on the last numbers, that would be about $18,750. We completed one of these grants at the start of this year. So in this year's real numbers, real money for this year, we've already obligated ourselves to two buses. And this would be bus number three. We only, the, the bus that's written in to be destroyed is our last bus that fits the grant. So it's not like we can keep doing this year after year. I, my goal at the start of this year was to kind of finish up at two million. And without this, I'm certain we can do that. With this, we may or we may not, but we're going to end up very healthy anyway. But I met with Mr. Kettles and Pito today, and they feel certain that if we do this, that we could go two years without buying another bus. We really have a current fleet. But if you all, you feel free to say, whoa, let's just slow down here. And I will, but if you all want to, would like, I just like some direction on whether to proceed. And you're not obligated at this point, but if you'd like for us to proceed with the D E Q grant, we can do that. It's just hard for me to throw away nineteen thousand dollars that's sitting there saying, here's nineteen thousand dollars for a new bus.
What, what would we owe on?
Fifty-five thousand.
And then we owe how much on the other two or?
Well, they're already encumbered, so that, that hundred and sixty thousand that we're ahead of last year's already included in that.
Really, we'd be up this year, be fifty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Well, actually, the second one's not encumbered, it's just budgeted in. And it's actually budgeted in at full price.
And I don't, I don't, we need, if we've got another bus, it's, you know, we need to play something.
And this will put them all up to eighty?
Yeah, this will be the, this, there's a certain emissions package that's stopped in, I want to say, I'm not going to say, two thousand and five, I think, but I couldn't. But this is the last bus that meets the emissions package that they're trying to get away, get rid of. So when we get it, we will probably have to wait till some other emissions restrictions come along before they have another grant like this.
Lay off buses for a year too, if we need to.
Well, actually, we're more than happy, I just, we, we hadn't planned on doing this many buses. But like I said, you know you're going to have to buy a bus. And you can buy it with someone giving you almost nineteen thousand dollars, or you can buy the whole thing.
Preferable.
I make a motion, we allow Superintendent Gethry to sue the D E Q grant.
Motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer to go ahead and apply for the D E Q grant.
Actually, we've already gotten it. So this will just, this is just moving forward with getting bids and moving forward, yeah.
Still moving forward?
Yes.
Motion made to move forward with the D E Q grant. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic G. Consideration of allowing high school band to take a school vehicle and van trailer to haul band instruments to the high school band trip in Washington, D.C. on May twenty-nineteen.
We had approved, we had approved for the band to fly. And then the, the stampers got to working with the airlines and the luggage cost and possible damage to all of their instruments, packing them in the hull of an airplane and everything. They just would like your permission to go ahead and for one of them and another adult to drive the instruments with our tra-trailer and truck and meet the airplane when it gets to Washington, D.C.
Make a motion, we allow the high school band to take the school vehicle and school trailer to haul the instruments to Washington, D.C.
And they invited any board members who'd like to drive.
They got to work. Motion made by John, second by David to allow the high school band to take a school vehicle and van trailer to haul band instruments to the high school band trip to Washington, D.C. in May twenty-nineteen. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to executive session A. Propose executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma statute, three oh seven being one of the open meeting act. Number one, discussion of the resignation of Billy Jones, grade school cook effective March the eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, page thirty-two. And number two, discussion to employ a cook effective March twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. And number three, discussion of potential candidates fulfilling the position of superintendent.
Motion, we convene into executive session.
Motion made by John, second by Jennifer at seven thirty-eight P.M. to convene in executive session. John?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.